Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive the report and approve the recommendations that are provided by the committee.
The motion was made and it was presented by Mr. Marishaw, but I'm not sure if he was part of the committee or not, so we won't assume about that. Under discussion.
In reference to the last paragraph of the report, this will tell him that the clause of sixty-five will be approved pending a positive recommendation of the contract by the Corporation Council, preceding to a summer meeting of the Council.
Can I ask the Chair that that's been...
We can read that question right through Mr. Marishaw. You're not permitted.
Counsel, that was part of the motion. The details of the contract, I can tell you right now, if the council tonight authorizes the participation in the program for next year, our office will be prepared, is prepared, to execute the contract. We don't have a copy for you because we'll change in the contract unless the council says something different tonight, but just a change of date, some, if you will, some scrupulous changes to ramp the contract forward to next year, we'll change the amount if the amount stays the same. So, I can assert to you here that the contract will be prepared in accordance with last year's contract and on a physical copy because, not only for that reason, but because we need to consult with Mr. Brothers as well as Mr. Shepherd, Wade Shepherd, to make sure that all parties agree on the dates and on final amounts in the contract.
Mr. President, I have your Mr. Pinder, please correct me if I'm wrong, but we signed this contract a year ago, correct?
Uh, last, last year.
And it was for, how many a year term?
Just for one year. One, one season, if one season. The contract you've signed would be for another season, similar, next season.
Just to follow up, then, did there is a path of recommendation from the Corporation Council?
The recommendation is positive, subject, if the council approves the participation, as they did last year, it's a positive recommendation and we don't expect any legal issues, so long as we don't have to make any material changes, which is all I understand.
Under discussion. Mr. Calabria?
Thank you, Mr. President. We all care pay real estate taxes and certainly we're all concerned about what's happening with the oil crisis this winter, but events like the Taste of Danbury and the Film Festival are well within and consistent with our plans on economic development for this city. The Film Festival promotes our state. If we bring it and we nurture it, it will produce positive results, as it did this year, but we need to think long-term. It's set way Denver into the arts, into film direction, creative areas, workshops, and entertainment, and it was fun. It brought visitors to Danbury, businesses to our shops, restaurants, and it did fill some hotel rooms. Two thousand and nine could be a real witness test for this program. Just think, we had three months to organize and put this thing together last year, what could we do with eight or nine months? The statistics, over four thousand visitors, three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars are expended, six hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in overall impact, economic impact, and over two hundred, well over two hundred responses, which were overwhelmingly favorable, and that's priceless. Thank you, Mr. President.
Under discussion. Mr. Leedy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have to reiterate my last position on the, on the granting of taxpayers' funds. I too received many calls from constituents that did not directly receive any of the benefits and they, they felt that it was not part of government to supply seventy-five thousand dollars to a profit-making organization. So I divided this event in actually in my mind in two sections. One of them is the cultural enrichment that it brings to the community, which I wholeheartedly support, the efforts to broaden the base of any cultural events, and we do that in many forms. We have many authorities that are related to the arts and operate on their own. As far as the economic part, I do have a problem. It's not a trivial amount if you're a person in the city of Danbury paying double or triple the amount you normally would for fuel oil this year. It's an important thing to them, and when they see expenses in these tough economic times being spent, basically donating to a profit-making organization, they question and they call, and they have done that. To put this in, what the economic portion of it does in this region and this area in prospectus, you have to look at things, I know we had on here the Walmart, who donated a thousand dollars towards the recreation in the city of Danbury, and also donates many thousands of dollars in thousand-dollar increments in the community. They do about a hundred and sixty million dollars a year out of their store here locally. Someone like Stu Leonard's, they do about three hundred million dollars in this region locally. Norwalk right now is doing their Oyster Fest, which is run by a nonprofit organization, and was brought to mind as I read the paper and the insert was in there, and I checked on what they do. Inside of three days, they have eighty thousand people that attend their Oyster Festival. It's a nonprofit group, it takes no money from the city of Norwalk, and it gives back to the community two hundred and forty thousand dollars to charitable nonprofit organizations. There is no guarantee that we do not own the Film Festival. We are a primary sponsor. At any time, it could leave the city of Danbury because we have, we do not own it, we do not control it, it's a private enterprise, and I just can't see where we should be donating money to an event like that with taxpayers' money. We really trimmed out a lot of nonprofit organizations and the money that we gave during budget time, I don't see where we could send the message out to them that we, we have seventy-five thousand dollars to spare. I also see that Center City, Danbury, which Mr. Nolan referred to, which he did not support as he rightly said, during its, when it first was proposed, we do have a director and there is a separate system, and I don't understand why they're not really running it and taking charge of that situation. I could also envision where Danbury perhaps could have an arts festival, almost like a street fair. We get a Taste of Danbury, and we have fifteen thousand people that attend in a three-day period. We could have an arts festival as well as many communities, I was at one in other in New York State this, this weekend, and we could generate these types of funds and advance the cultural and the arts in Danbury. So, I just don't see where we should be investing Danbury money. I support the cultural events that go on, but I just don't think that, that Danbury should be giving seventy-five thousand dollars to a profit-making organization.
Thank you, Mr. Leedy. Anything else in the discussion? Mr. Sack?
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended some of the Film Festival, I think it was a positive event, and I do think it actually went beyond the downtown, it did benefit Danbury a little more broadly than that, and the effect was felt more significantly in the downtown by the downtown vendors and commercial entities, some of which I've spoken with. I think it would be positive for the future, but I also agree with those that are concerned about not just this particular item and public funding, but that there has been other areas that I have opposed, not because of what those events or venues do, but the dollars that are used for them and some uncertainty down the road. That being said, maybe a way to do this is to somewhat split the difference, and with that, I would offer an amendment to the main motion, as follows, to provide half of the amount, being thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars, to the festival at this time contingent upon matching funds being raised as cash donations or sponsorships within a six-month period, or in lieu of raising such funds, that the Film Festival would return to the council for reauthorization of the amount and could request at a time additional funding.
Second. Motion made the second by Mr. Stas, the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? Mr. Chinas?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the amendment is good because, again, it shows initiative from both sides. It shows a partnership from the city to the festival, and also gives incentive for the festival to go out and try to raise funds, and I think it's positive because the festival at some point has to start weeding itself off of government funding, but eventually there may not be no funding at all, so this would be a, a good opportunity for them to start raising funds on their own, and again, the city, they can always come back if that does not reach, so it gives them incentive, and I think it's good that the city is, is offering that as a suggestion. I would support that amendment.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Mr. Turner?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to know what risks we have if this amendment is passed, if we're only going to prove half the money, if the other half is raised, what risks are we facing if we don't, if they don't raise their half of the money? Are we not going to have this, this festival here at this weekend, or are we just running other places to go?
I'm always kind of holding, trying to throw my question. Would you like to ask Mr. Turner?
I guess, I guess, what do you think of that?
Of the amendment? Well, I'll tell you, the scope of the festival, as in the document that I've handed out this evening and also emailed to everybody, it shows where the festival's going, and it was actually in my original pitch to the mayor and the comic council, I want to say last year, it was actually this year, to increase the scope of the festival, to not only have film, but also go into the areas of independent music and also the areas of what's known as interactive social media and digital multimedia, and this, and this model or this package is something similar to the South by Southwest Festival, which is a very, very successful festival and conference down, down Austin, Texas. I need time to plan that, and I, I really, I can't predict what sort of sponsorship funding that I'm going to get throughout the year, if you look at, if you had a chance to see the document that I emailed around and handed out this evening, you'll see that there is somewhere in excess of four hundred thousand dollars, and so far I've come up with about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars of in-kind sponsorship. They're not cash sponsorships, okay? They're in-kind sponsorships, and the difference between a donation and a sponsorship is those in-kind sponsorships are actually an opportunity for a corporation to market themselves with, through the marketable assets, they exploit the festival, they leverage the festival, exploit is such a dirty word, but they leverage the festival instead of giving cash, but the deal still is the same. You know, for instance, the caterer was here this evening, he, he did a large amount of catering, and they actually approached the festival because they wanted to be involved in the festival because they knew it, and in that month, he got, he got two thousand extra hits on his website and contracted, I believe he told me, somewhere, somewhere in the neighborhood of a dozen jobs. A dozen jobs, a ten or twenty thousand dollars a job, and he employs all these people, well, I'm given the runaround, he might have to get the hook out and pull me off the stage. The bottom line is, is I need to plan the festival, and I'm certainly going to go after corporate sponsors and wean this festival, festival off of, of public funding, but the festival does bring a value to the city, and at the same time, it would be nearly impossible for me to guarantee something that, you know, I just don't have a crystal ball, I can't tell what's going to happen.
Thank you. Through the Chair, Mr. Brothers, what would happen if you didn't get the money?
If I get the sixty-five thousand from the city of Danbury, I'd have to seriously consider looking for a similar community because when I did pitch this festival, I was looking for a city like Danbury because this was an economic development model, this could be a sporting event, it could be a mud wrestling event, whatever, to draw people to, to the city. Well, I modeled it after very famous, several very famous festivals like Toronto, Cannes, you know, and, and South by Southwest. A lot of these cities actually put up a lot more money to make one of these festivals happening, so I'm really honored by the fact that Danbury took a chance on this last year with seventy-five thousand dollars. Now I've lowered the amount, the amount, weaned it off a little bit because I can see some money coming down the pike as far as maybe grants or sponsorship, and hopefully year after year, we can wean the festival back, maybe it'll be next year, maybe it'll be the next year, but it's all going to be a matter at that time, you knowing what to vote on and not vote on. Hopefully within the next year or two, I wouldn't even be standing here because it would, you know, it's got, it's got teeth, it's got legs, it should stand on its own. If I couldn't get the money here, I'd have to seriously consider finding a community that would fit the same economic development model, because when I originally pitched this, it was pitched to Middletown, Norwalk, Bridgeport, and a couple of other communities around the state, and Danbury stepped up to, stepped up to the plate first with the check, and that's, that's one of the reasons. Plus, I really want to certain my community, I'm in, I'm a Bethel resident, but I, you know, I consider this a regional community, and Danbury is certainly the center of it some.
No, not this time. Any other discussion, Mr. President? Mr. Riley?
Just so I understand, the, again, to reiterate the motion, as I understand it, is that somewhat of, half of the monies that were being asked for would be put forward, and then the other, the other monies would be set aside, hopefully you, Mr. Welling, under the respect of you, you can have time to go out and either write for grant assistance, to go to corporation businesses and see if they could offer monies to help sponsor. It seems to me that, I mean, I'm all for the, what, what's going on, but I'm also a little bit, I'm a little bit concerned about the issue of the times, the times are very difficult for each and every one of us, and I feel, I feel a little bit worried about those, those people that are on fixed incomes that we turn around and give sixty-five thousand dollars with no, with no attachment of any incentive for user to go out there and canvass and maybe bring in the other half. I, I just, in my heart, I feel sorry for those elderly folks that are on fixed incomes and might not be able to afford a few this year, and so maybe that, that extra thirty-five thousand that would be part of the motion would, could be set aside for them, while you have a whole year to go out and try to bring in that other thirty thousand, whatever it might be, but if by chance it doesn't happen, well, then you come back to this council and I'm sure that we could do right for you without you having to, as you said, quote quality and, and all the respect and, and sir. Thank you.
Can I, can I speak to that?
Mr. Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Brothers, from what I hear, you seem to be saying you're in Danbury for the long haul. That's correct. You know, I think a year from now, two years down the road, the, the genesis of the amendment would probably be an intriguing idea, I think it's an intriguing idea right now. The problem I have with it is that it probably should have been approached at the ad hoc, and that might have been my fault, I maybe thought of doing something like that, but it seems like it's a little bit late in the day for two thousand and nine. The idea seemed to be at the last ad hoc to discuss the financial impact and general success of the two thousand and eight Film Festival, which by all accounts was financially successful and culturally successful, and debate whether we should fund it again at that time so that Mr. Brothers would have a longer lead to put next year's show together, which would, from all reports, produce a better show. If we vote up this amendment, I'm afraid we're going to, I'm sure the time is, you know, will land at its feet, but I just don't want to tie his hands at this point, I will be voting against the amendment next year, the year after that. Mr. Brothers is moving in the right direction, Film Festival has clearly been successful, I think we should hone it up or not, straightforward, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to clarify, I know there was concerns of timing here, that's why, I know Mr. Brothers wants to expand the scope of the festival, which is a good thing. This festival was, Mr. Brothers and others did a very good job putting it together in a short period of time. We're doing this now, not a year, but, you know, maybe nine or ten months before, where the last festival we had, I think we did it a few months, two or three months prior. So that's why I thought this was a way to approach it because we have a much larger window of time, and to address the concern of what would happen, what's the risk, that's why in the motion, there is an opportunity, and the legislative intent behind it is to keep the door open so that we can then hear concerns with regard to the absence of corporate donations or underwriting sponsorships in cash for venues. So that's my intent behind it, not to scuttle from the beginning, but to sort of, you know, split the difference here and try to work something out, and I appreciate you letting me speak, that's my second thought, thank you, Mr. President.
Anything else in the discussion? Mr. Turner, your first time.
Well, it was Chairman, I agree with the Council on, on this one. I think they did a remarkable job after this three months, and I'm not willing to gamble. I want to give, I want to give them a shot at that one here, and I'll be voting against the government.
Second time?
First time on the amendment. Through the Chair to Mr. Brothers, you had mentioned several communities that were prior to Danbury coming forward, were perhaps interested, or you at least made the offers to the other communities. It kind of baked the question, if one of the other communities offered a hundred and twenty-five thousand, would the Film Festival be somewhere else?
No, that would be totally unethical. I don't, you know, where I eat, I have to sleep at night, and I want to do something. I mean, you know, I live right down the street here, you guys know where I live, no, I, you can't do something like that, I, I don't live that way.
I'd like to just kind of pass the gamble to Mr. Seaberry, I'm going to speak on this myself. One of the things I'd like to say, for some of the comments or some of the council committee today, Mr. Turner's fifty, Bristol came in and Norwalk offered you a hundred thousand dollars for the Film Festival to them, would you consider it?
You mean to move the main event there? No, if it was decided here?
If this wasn't decided tonight, if we decided only to be half the money tonight, and...
Well, like, I'm sorry.
And told you to go and raise the other thirty-five thousand dollars, and, and as a PR company, or hiring for the city of Danbury, just sell the city of Danbury out, would there be a thought that was across your mind that maybe you would get the festival somewhere else?
Well, knowing that my contract said that the decision would be made tonight, I'd have to seriously consider somebody making me an offer.
And the other concern I have is for the sixty-five thousand dollars that we're invested with this, this coming year, hopefully invested this coming year, I'm thinking about the people that are having trouble paying their energy bills, I'm thinking about people that have rising costs, and they all do, and I'm thinking about the money that the non-riding and the people that have brought it to Danbury, the money that they bring into the city that helps pay the salaries and the taxes, and the other things that people have go into their bank accounts to help them pay their oil bills in their accounts and their, their expenses every year, and I'm looking at it from that faction, I'm looking at it from that direction. I think that it's important that we keep economic development going here in Danbury, and this is a great way to do it, and give the sixty-five, sixty-five thousand dollar investment, that's a lot of money, I'm hard to do that, to work at one facet of our economic development. And I would like to, I would like to see us put that money forward and get this going. I would love to see us see another zone in a couple of years, and that would be great, and I think that's your hope, and that's the city's hope, and that's the direction we're going to take. I find it difficult to hire you as a PR firm and then say, oh, well, by the way, go raise half the money to give me, because I don't know who pays the thirty-five thousand, I don't know anything to do with that, I'm troubled by that, so. One of the, the other camera they had was about the Oyster Festival, because I know somebody mentioned Oyster Festival tonight, I wonder if the Oyster Festival made its first year? I wonder if the Oyster Festival made its first year for the city of Norwalk? It's in, I don't know what year it's in, I've lived with it for most of years, so I'm happy to see that it has done the job that it's done, but I'll also tell you that I know that the city, or, or invests a lot of in-kind donations to the Oyster Festival, in the way of, service, police, fire, EMS, and the cleanup after, so, and the in-kind donation from the city of Norwalk is probably three to the sixty-five thousand that we're asking for for this, and that's what I'm doing today. Thank you. Anything else in the discussion? Mr. Trevetta?
Thank you, Mr. President. I really feel there, there is no dollar limit that we could possibly attribute to what this did for downtown Danbury, and I believe what it will continue to do for downtown Danbury. We always in this council talk about revitalization of downtown, there's people that, that oppose the, the creation of the mall and frightened because really the center part of our city is dispersed over three or four different areas. This is a way to bring back to downtown Danbury exactly what we need, revitalization, people that will come down, see Danbury for as it should be seen, not only within our own city, but with the cities and other communities throughout Connecticut and cross-state lines, so I will be voting against the amendment.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Mr. Sack?
Move the question. On the amendments.
Motion to move the question. Second. Second by Mr. Rattler. By your minds, those in favor of moving the question signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Everybody opposed? The House, the Senate, the House of Representatives, you move the question. Back to the main motion. Back to the amendment. On the amendment, everybody clear on what the amendment is? To reduce the sixty-five thousand to...
Amendment is to provide half the requested funding contingent upon raising, to remain there, and that, within six months, with an option to return the council to reauthorization for no sponsor or additional funding.
This is on the amendment.
McMahon. No. Negerchef.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Trumbetta.
No.
Caladrino.
No.
Perkins.
No.
Disconti.
Yes.
Chinis.
Yes.
Esposito.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Cobb.
Yes, I know.
Rettello.
No.
Dees.
No.
Tysholz.
No.
Arcanti.
No.
Curran.
No.
Knapp.
No.
Levy.
Yes.
Riley.
Yes.
Seaberry.
No.
Stanley.
No.
Six guesses, just six guesses. Back to the main motion. Mr. Chair, we've heard a lot of terms, economic impact, income sponsors, leverage, direct spending, some of those terms can be a little on the confusing side. I've attended many of those events at the Film Festival, I talked to a lot of people I talked to a lot of people also. Talked to people going in and out of restaurants, I talked to people hearing international films, I talked to people, directors who were staying at local hotels. Good for the city, good for downtown. Also piggybacks on a lot of initiatives brought down from the state of Connecticut, initiatives to bring the film festival to this area. I also am concerned about some of the economic concerns that some of the speakers voiced earlier. These expenses here are actually deep accelerating. We have other agencies in this town that were in a quarter of a million deep so far, with no end in sight. I really think that we should consider making this film festival go forward. I would also like to ask that in the future, Mr. Whitney and Mr. Crowthers do a little bit better job with their disclosure and transparency, just make it understandable for people to get a grasp on these different types of concepts. But overall, I think this is good for the city, I think it's good for Danbury, and I'll be supporting these funds.
Thank you, Mr. President. Needless to say, the amendment failed, and naturally, I would certainly not, not at this time, or against the main motion. But I would just like to say that I would hope, as, as we go forward, and with regard to the financial aspect of this, that maybe you and your team could look to the future, look to the next eight or nine months, and maybe, just maybe, there's money out there in grant funding, maybe there's money from corporations that if you would set aside a little bit of your time, I know you're going to be awful busy, but set aside a little bit of your time for some of your team members, and maybe you could do a little bit better job of coming before this dies a year from now and say, listen, I had a whole year to do what I had to do, we had another successful summer, but here's what I, I'm going to bring to the table. Because when you come before us again next year, it's, chances are, the recessionary trend that we're in is only going to be worse. I do not see things changing that quickly. Therefore, I think it's very important that you really look at other means of funding other than using taxpayers' money at this time. It is a, it is a wonderful event, and I don't question that at all, but, but the financial aspect of it, and it sort of worries me in some way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Any other discussion? Seaman, Mr. Rattell?
Thank you, Mr. President. Applause. Okay. Movie industry, 2008 slated for a record year, with all kinds of things about file sharing and copyright violations and everything else. And the end of the movie industry has been predicted for as long as there's been movies. 1949, television came in, they thought it was going to be the end. 1965, they thought it was going to die. And a couple of years ago, they thought it was going to die. This year, it looks like, good for the movie guys, that it could be a bumper crop as far as ticket sales and general funds coming into the studios and all. I was at the film festival in May, and I went to one of the workshops, which was put on by Pennsylac University, a professor from Pennsylac, and he had a half dozen students all about the age of 19, 20, 21, who spoke about their own personal experiences breaking into this very lucrative field with no experience, no family background. The interesting thing about the movie industry is it happens to be one of those industries where you can get into it and become successful essentially from out of nowhere. You don't need an education, you don't need pedigree, you don't need family connections, those things help, nothing wrong with it, but you can still get into it and, like Steven Spielberg, become tops in your field with nothing behind you save ambition and drive. So I'm sitting there at St. James Church watching this workshop, and it occurs to me that every single person at the workshop is from the Hamden, New Haven area, there's nobody there from Danbury. I'm saying to myself, why is that? How come we don't have some kids from Danbury, Connecticut, from this town to the film festival that is at that panel talking about their experience? And the answer is, because no one has ever showed them, no one has ever taken them by the hand and said to them, some of these kids who may be living in poverty, and said, listen, that dream about making movies or video games or TV shows or anything that has to do with electronic performing arts, you can be a part of that. It's not a crazy thing, you can actually do this, and here's how. My take for that day, this was one of seven days at South by Southwest Festival, was that if this film festival takes a couple of kids from Danbury, shows them how to make movies, and they become successful, and it gets them out of poverty, the entire community of Danbury benefits. And we've heard tonight that the guys downtown think they're benefiting, and that you don't want to take that away from them, that's a really good thing. But we also heard that maybe it wasn't so universal, maybe the, you know, the pros of the film festival sort of restricted to a small geographical area. I got to disagree with that. I think that the first year of the film festival, that may be true, but if the film festival, through our support, and it's not just financial, it's also, people are volunteering, I've spoken to directors who came to the film festival and said, Danbury has an amazing film festival. I mean, it's our first time, probably it'd be amazing, because they said, the outpouring support from the community. This is something like, it might be a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, I don't want to gild the lily here, it may be, it may not, but this could be one of those things where we look back and say, thank God those guys back in the Leos put this thing together and stuck with it, because it really turned into something. That's the film festival. That's what you're getting for your $65,000 bucks. That's not why I'm voting for it. I'm voting for it because we've got a problem in Danbury that was alluded to earlier this evening, and one of those problems that we have is perception. We need corporations to relocate to this city, we need investment. We've got the infrastructure, we've got rail, we've got highway, we've got water, we've got air, we've got the physical plant, we've got a water system that's second to one, we've got a sewer system that's in excellent condition, it's available, we're paid to upgrade it, we've got the physical attributes that we need, but we're not getting our message out.
My house is probably about three feet over.
Oh, yeah, I heard there's a thunderstorm. So, let me wrap this up. I, I am voting for it, and I think that we should support it, because the $65,000, let's put the film festival aside for just a moment, let's consider the public relations benefit that this money is going to bring us over the next several years. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Hope everyone gets along as well as the council members. I think this evening, we heard a lot of positive things about discussing, and this council over the past have been very supportive of our team and the city. We sponsored the ICE Center, we sponsored the Historical Society, and we sponsored many of the festivals throughout our city throughout the year, food in kind donations. But I also have a problem as a councilman, we also have a fiscal responsibility that we have to endure as well. And that's me personally, and I think this personally, you know, I'm going to support the festival as an individual. I will financially support this festival, because I believe this is very good for our city. And not only financially, I also will support professionally, if you so ask me to. I'm present in discussion with you, I know you know how to help to make this successful. One person cannot make this event successful. But again, financially, I have to vote against this. You know, the city over the last few months have been talking about ways of cutting costs. We're going four days a week, so we can save money. So how, on one hand, we're trying to cut costs, on the other hand, we're spending it. And then where does it end? If we support this festival, or we can support every festival financially? So as a city, we have to come to grips in terms of how we go forward. But again, personally, I think this is very good for the city, and I think everybody on this council thinks it's very good. And I hope everybody on this council supports funding as well, so it can assist you to weed away from, from the city funding. I think the amendment tonight was very good. It gave you an incentive to move forward, to raise sponsorships, and also having the city as a partnership. So again, I do believe the festival is very good for the city, but financially, I just cannot support it. And the second question I do have is for the corporation committee, to the finance director, about certification of farmers. Where is the money coming from?
Money would be coming from contingency.
Certified, fair, mobile?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Mr. President, I would like to move the question, please.
If you can move the question, we have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Negershey. All those in favor of moving the question, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And then all those opposed, signify by saying nay. If you have a shot on the other, the need to move the question. Mr. Ryan? If the president has very good move, the main motion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
If the nays put it, they have a vote. Mr. Biscanti, Mr. Chinis, Mr. Sadi, and Mr. Levy, you have a vote. Motion passes.